All right, it is seven o'clock. So we will call our meeting to order and again, welcome all of you that are here this evening. I'm glad to see all of you here. First order of business is I'd like to ask that you join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first I'll start with introductions. To my left, our council members Patricia Thole, Mark Vanderlinde, Pam Mortensen, Bob Christians, and then next to Bob is our city engineer Paul Hornby. To my right is city administrator Mike Barone. Next to him, our finance director Brian Grimm. Next to him, our community development director David Abel. And then our city attorney Ron Beatty. And then our chief of police, our public safety director Paul Falls. We also have in our audience, okay, you're hiding, Mr. Gary Peters, our superintendent for Public Works. Thank you. Next is approval of our agenda. I'm going to make two changes. Persons to be heard will be number three. So we'll do special presentations first. And then if there is anybody that wishes to speak on another issue that's not on the agenda, it would be persons to be heard. And then I'd like to add, under business item, it would be business item number F. It would be the master planning for city parks. This was part of our work session that we did not get to, so we'll add that to our regular meeting. With that, I have no other changes or additions. Anybody else? I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as changed.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as changed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. You will also notice that we have a new microphone system. Hopefully, all of you can hear well. I'd like to just point out, please, if you haven't already done so, please turn off all your electronic devices so that you don't interrupt the meeting and so that you don't create some disturbance for your neighbor person next to you. Next, we have our special presentation. So we'll get right to that. We're gonna have, so this is kinda how we'll work it. Staff has a presentation, a PowerPoint. The council will ask staff questions if they have any additional questions or comments. And then we're gonna open it up for questions and comments from the public. And we'll have ample time for you to do that. So with that, Mr. Barone?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight to talk about water treatment in Minatrista both past and future. Do you wanna go to the next slide, please, Stephen?
Speaking to the mic.
Yep. So I'm not gonna be naive enough to say that this isn't a political issue here in this city, we know that. But I'm gonna try to give some information here tonight without the politics involved. The things that have gone on in this city in the last year and a half have kinda revolved around the, this issue, this water treatment issue. But I think if we just keep talking about it, we're gonna stay in the discussion phase for quite a while longer, like we have been the last year and a half, year and three quarters. So we wanna get out of that and actually start doing something about this. Next slide. So this actually began back in June of 2013. The city council heard the city engineer presentation on water treatment facility feasibility study. At that point in time, the council directed staff to go forward with a couple of things. The first one was to seek proposals for a pilot study with related cause. And then charged the staff with looking at a rate structure study to determine future rates. Obviously, if we're gonna build something, we gotta know what our water rates are gonna go up. So that was the items that were discussed back in June. We came back in July of 2013. The council authorized that pilot study that was discussed a month previous in June. There were several alternatives that were developed within the scope of that pilot study. And they were there, all to meet the projected 2030 water system demands of the city of Minatrista. Ultimately, what was suggested in the, and determined as the best course of action was to provide a decentralized approach. So we'd have a standalone north system, and then a connected south and central system. And this will be done on a phased-in basis. The north system was determined that it had sufficient capacity and storage that it could be kind of a self-supporting system. South's system was a little different. There were a couple of things there. They thought if they combined, there would be some needed capacity and storage increases overall. And that mostly was due to the firefighting things that are gonna be needed to have, take place there. And then the also, a very significant thing was the complaints about the drinking water that mostly occur in the south system. And I would venture to guess that most of you folks are here from that area. A good number of you. So we move forward to December of 2013. The council accepts the completed pilot study. They authorize WSB Engineering to design two gravity filtration water plants. A 500 gallons per minute, that's what GPM stands for, plant for the north system. And then a 1,000 gallon per minute south-central system. And kind of ironically, ultimately, even though it was a centralized system, as we get a little further on down here in this PowerPoint, this is the same, they were designing a 1,500 gallon per minute centralized system that was gonna be just down the road here. So it was the same amount of gallons per minute, just done differently. In February 18th of 2014, we were going to discuss water treatments. We had a council member bring forth what was called a value engineering study from a completely different engineering firm, Bolton &amp; Mink. They suspended, the council suspended their contract for final design with WSB. And they created a value engineering timeline. And that's on the next slide. So it was just less than two weeks later, they had a value engineering study take place. On March 3rd, we came to a council meeting. And Bolton &amp; Mink presented the preliminary results of that value engineering study to the city council. And then at the March 17th meeting in 2014, in a work session, they discussed the value engineering study a little bit more with the idea of possibly exploring a reverse osmosis for water treatment. And also at that time, WSB Engineering decided to remove themselves from being part of the water treatment process. We move forward, working on that work, we, the council decided to hold an open house on water treatment. That was held at the public safety facility on June 18th. It was also decided by the council to go with a mail-out survey of water users, except for July. That survey went out and came back, and we reported, staff reported back the results of the survey at the August 2014 meeting. The results of the survey said centralized gravity filtration plant was the choice of those that responded to the survey. I think we have a roughly 1,100 water users, and that's who received the survey. And I think we got about 40%, if I remember correctly, low 40% response rate. And so that's roughly 400, 450, somewhere in that neighborhood of total responses. And the centralized gravity filtration plant was the highest-ranked one of those, and it had a little over 200 responses. It was also the least expensive option delineated in the survey. So planning for, and discussion of that option began. So you get to November 25th, we got an update from Bolton &amp; Mink on the design for the centralized water treatment facility. And the price tag at that point was now $19.5 million. And again, as I mentioned a little earlier, that was to be located just to our east here. On December 1st, the city council on a 5-0 vote decided to stop again, looking at this process of citing a water treatment plant because of that cost. Then we get to January 5 of this year. We had a request from council to check, since it's been a little while, why don't you check and see if our neighbors, Mound and St. Boniface, would like to partner with us and maybe make this a more regional water plant? That had been discussed during the summer of 2014. And at that time, we had talked exclusively with Mound, and they said, for a variety of reasons, that they said no. But we checked back in with them in January. We reported back to the city council. Again, this had to do with when those two councils met in relation to our council meetings. So we were able to next get back to our council and report four different reasons. Both Mound and St. Boniface said no to partnering on a water treatment plant. In fact, it was interesting, if you followed the vote at, of the, of the Mound council, or the discussion of the Mound council, the engineer for Mound said that the plan for Mound was not to, not to have a centralized plant, they were gonna kinda do a decentralized option. Have a couple of different smaller plants within their city. That's how they had established their well system and lift stations and things like that, with that in mind. So then you get to last week. Fun week for city staff and council members. We all got a lot of phone calls from people upset. We did go ahead and do some flushing that affected the Hunter's Crest neighborhood. I received a lot of emails, telephone calls. And instead of pushing this off and ignoring that, we decided that tonight, instead of using, generally, this part of the council meetings are used to hear presentations to the council, we decided we'd give one to you folks and use this time to do it. So we didn't drag our feet on that, we said, let's talk about it. Also, no, I just wanted to make a, take a minute to talk about it. I did get a phone call late on Friday from Mr. John LaPointe. John is the, I'm just gonna get his title here, so I correct. He is the district engineer for drinking water protection with the Minnesota Department of Health, I'm sorry, I see it right there. He's actually the interim director. There's a person he's subbing for is on a military lease, so he's been actually in this position for about three or four months now, and probably a few more months to go. But he said he was getting inundated or swamped by residents contacting him. He asked me basically, do I have to come to this meeting tonight? And I frankly said, no. There's no, there's no value with somebody from MDH coming here tonight. They are well aware, we're on a first-name basis with the people over at MDH. They know all about the terrible water that we have here in Minatrista. That's why I wanted to outline for all you folks kinda how this all started and why we are here tonight, still not having anything in place for you. At least you know the timeline and all the attempts that have been made by the various councils and council members to get to where we are tonight. But just to go back to Mr. LaPointe, if you call him and say, like an attack dog, hey, go get the city, they're not doing anything, they know that. There's nothing that they don't know about what our water situation is like. It won't change the timeline going forward either. I wish it was, I wish he could wave a magic wand, the special Minnesota Department of Health magic wand, and get our water plants in now, but that's just not gonna be the case. So we had the event last week that affected a lot of Hunter's Crest neighborhood. I wanted to talk about kinda what you saw, and what we do as to test, 'cause a lot of people think that we don't test our water. We do. A lot of think we, a lot of people tend to think we have a lot of carcinogens and things like that in our water. We don't. The water's discolored for a couple of main reasons. One is iron, the other is manganese. Iron makes it look a little red, rusty brown, like a rusty nail. Manganese is kind of a black color, so as you get this really cruddy-looking stuff, not arsenic. Minatrista's water supply from our existing wells does not exceed any of the allowable Safe Drinking Water Act primary standards. Does exceed the secondary standards, and I've detailed where that is. Iron in all five city wells, and manganese in a couple of wells, Wells 1 and Wells 5. The secondary standards don't impact your health as a consumer of our water. Now, it smells awful, it tastes awful, it looks awful, but it won't hurt you, believe it or not. It's just a lot of iron and a lot of manganese. I wouldn't wanna drink it either, but the fact is that it's not harmful to your health. Just kinda broadly looking at the Minnesota Department of Health, they oversee 960 what's called community water systems. And that serves about 80% of the population in Minnesota. The remaining 20 get their residents in Minnesota, get their water from private wells. In fact, if you go to their website like I did today, they're more concerned with about people that are on well water, drinking arsenic than they are people that live in cities that treat their water. Of the CWSs that serve Minnesota, 25% come from surface water, 55% come from groundwater. So when we put in our water treatment plants, we're treating groundwater. That's why I put Minatrista in parentheses after that. So it's a pretty predominant option. Community water systems in Minnesota are required to meet the Safe Water Drinking Act standards. The Department of Health Drinking Water Protection Program, if you called Mr. LaPointe, that's what he heads up. They're responsible for assuring that that happens in water systems in the state. And we consistently comply with the SDWA standards for drinking water. Little bit more specific about water testing. We test twice weekly, all five wells. And what we're testing for is what's called residual fluoride and residual chlorine. Now, the fluoride is added because we're required to by the federal government. That's why we have, we all don't have as many dental issues as some other countries, they put fluoride in the water. It's required. The chlorine is added to kill bacteria. And depending on where you live on the run of the pipe between the water, the well and where you live, at the end, we have to be able to check that that chlorine level's at the mandated level. So if you live a little further upstream, kinda towards the source, we've heard people say, wow, it just smells like a swimming pool when I turn on my water. Well, that's the chlorine. And the reason it is, if you let it sit in the glass for about 5, 10 seconds, it'll dissipate once it's oxidized or with air. But we need that much chlorine in order to make the entire run not have bacteria. So we put in, at one spot, the chlorine has to make the entire run. So obviously, if you're a little closer to the well, it's gonna smell a little bit more like chlorine. We also inject or use a, an ingredient called a polyphosphate, and that's used as a sequestering agent. And basically what that does, it just binds with iron and manganese. Not permanently, but as it makes its way down the pipe. The idea is to kinda tie it up. So when it gets to your tap, you're not seeing it. We sent our fluoride test to the Minnesota Department of Health. We're required to send it in four times a year, although we check weekly. We send four monthly, four times a year, we send it in for the fluorine, fluoride, I'm sorry. The chlorine is actually done by an independent group. This is Angle Water Treatment. They're actually located, I think, in Maple Plain. They've been around since 1989, is an independent certified by the Minnesota Department of Health Water Testing Group. And they test our chlorine levels at various places monthly. We check it weekly, but they check it monthly and then send those results into the state. Minnesota Department of Health also has a test for other organic and inorganic, things like nitrates, nitrites, lead, copper, toxicity, alkali, TOCs, which is total organic compounds, the haloacetic acid, that kinda stuff. And what they do is, they say, we want you to check this water system in this area. They tell us where to check. That way, cities like Minatrista or anybody else can't cherry pick, hey, let's go over here, we know the water's good, let's check that, send it in, and we're good. They tell us where to check, and we have to do it. Kinda moving on to the next step here, for those that are here from Hunter's Crest, I will admit that we, mistake was probably made when we flushed. It was just one of our staff members reacting to a complaint. So we apologize, we weren't intentionally trying to make you all call us. But what we like to do is to, if you're so interested, is to give us your name, address, and email, and we'll try to recreate the list, we don't know where it is. I think that vanished when our city clerk vanished back in October. We'll try to create a blast list, so if we can, when we're gonna do flushing, send you an email ahead of time. It's not always gonna happen, but if we can do that, we would like to. I'm trying to decide what's the best way to do this. I think you could send it to minatrista@ci.minitrista.mn.us. That's an email box, generic email box, we'll get it. And we'll give it to our staff personnel, create this blast list. The other thing we've done in the past, and again, we did, this didn't happen last week, is we'll have sandwich boards, we'll put those up, hey, we're gonna flush on whatever day. Try to give you a heads up on that. If we can do that, if it's feasible, we will do that. Generally, we flush a couple times a year. We flushed in other places more often because of complaints, but in general, can't flush in the winter, as you can imagine, we get a lot of ice. But we can flush in the spring and the fall. And that gives us a chance to flush those out six months apart, so we're not like flushing for four months and then flushing for eight months. If we do it six months apart, then we're kinda consistently flushing. And it's also weather-dependent. We had kind of a terrible late spring last year, I think we got to a little later. This year, we're getting 70s in March, so we might get to a little sooner. But we'll try to keep people posted on when we're gonna do the flushing. So what you can expect, if we do broadcast, put up sandwich boards, email, that we're going to do some flushing. If you have a water softener in your home, you should put it on bypass. Once the flushing's done, you might wanna drain a few gallons of water out of your hot water heater. That'll get some of the iron and manganese that's maybe settled down to the bottom, down the drain. Generally, the buildup of all these elements like manganese and iron occur in the line that's from your street to your house. That's where the sediment builds up. So if you have a sink in your basement with a laundry tub, or if you just have a utility sink, you may wanna run some water till you get it cleared down there before it heads into your, the rest of your house. Other things you could do, it's up to you, to buy a home filter system. You may already have one, you may have to change the filters a lot, we apologize, but that's kinda where you're at. You could completely drain your hot water heater once a year. Obviously, you want anybody that says, I wanna take a bath next, but, you know, drain it once a year. And then you can either buy water softening pellets or add iron out, another powder, it'll help regenerize, regenerate your soft water media that's in that softener. Where we're going, I kinda backtrack, went back to middle part of 2013 to kinda tell you where we've been. Here's where we're going. The process is such that the RFPs, to hire a third engineer for the water treatment is ongoing. Those RFPs have been mailed out to, I wanna say, eight?
Eight is correct.
Eight engineering firms. Minnesota-based, upper Midwest-based, I don't know if there's any national ones, it could be, they may work nationally. Those are due back to the city by March 25th. Between the March 26th and April 3rd, that's a Friday, staff's gonna review those proposals. We'll include them all into the packet for the city council to look at. But we'll come up with some recommendations of why we think you should go with Agency A or Agency B. Prices may differ, but that's because their parameters on how they're gonna tackle our problem may differ. So we may not always suggest the cheapest one, maybe one that's a little bit more expensive, but they'd be done three months sooner. We may go with that, we may wanna pay that premium. That's gonna be dependent upon what they give us. But we're trying to get it back so we can give a recommendation to the council on the 6th. Hopefully that night, they'll make a decision. And then the project schedule, we would have a kickoff meeting on the 13th, that would be with whoever we hire. We're gonna give them 30 days for preliminary design. And the reason that's kind of a short amount of time, we've got a couple of engineering studies already that have done some preliminary design stuff that are already there, that they can work from. We're gonna ask, the final design and construction, again, construction would depend upon who we select as the consultant, and that's again requested in the RFP. But what we hope to do is to have the construction completed in late, I'm saying, fall 2016. That's the presentation I had. It was a lot of information rather quickly. I have some other people here that can answer questions besides me. Paul Hornby is our city engineer, Gary Peters is our public works superintendent, they can certainly answer questions. Little later on in tonight's council meeting, Tom Rorschar is here from WSB, he's kinda their water expert. Little later on in the proceedings, if you wanna hang around, we're gonna talk about financing options for this. That's been something we've talked about before, but we're bringing it back, just to kinda make sure we know where the council wants to go on that. If you do, as the mayor mentioned, you wanna come, please state your name and your address for the record. She'll maybe use discretion if you're repeating views of somebody else. We're trying to get to many different views as possible. If you're here with a group, may have somebody speak as a spokesperson for your group. And then again, if it gets really long, initially, we'll try to limit you to three minutes, but if it's really good discussion, per discretion, decide if we're gonna leave at the podium that much longer. I don't know if anybody has any questions kinda overall about where we're at?
Let's start real quick, if just, if you'll bear with me just a second. Let's have the, any questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, I'll just go to the public here, a lot of people. Okay, then we'll start out and we'll just kinda go down the rows. And if you forego an opportunity, I'll come back and again, to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak. So if you'd like, we can start out in the front row. Or should I start in the back?
I'll defer for now.
You'll defer for now, okay? Mr. Cole, nothing? Ms. Maud?
I just have a question.
If you could come to the podium, please, and speak into the microphone. And also again, for the record, just state your name.
Yeah. Minatrista, Sol Saunders. You had mentioned that you're gonna talk about the cost financing. Do you have any idea on the projected increase in our water bill? You know, is there a cap, or is this something you don't know yet until you get a bid that you're accepting?
We have some projections.
I mean, has it changed from what it was before?
I don't think so. I'll let Mr. Grimm speak to that briefly.
I think at the, was it one of the meetings in January, we talked about the $13 million option, it being about a 2% to 4% increase a year for the next several years in order to pay for it. So that's, we're still tracking, you know, obviously depending on what comes back with the final design, and then obviously, once bids go out and we move through the process. But that $13 million project roughly would be increases of, yeah, 2% to 4% the next several years to cover that.
Each year.
Each year, correct? Yep.
For five years. And then, I know, this has been brought up before, that, you know, to have it cost less for the water users, I mean, isn't it possible that all the residents of Minatrista should be able to help pay for this? I know someone had mentioned that there's some law hooks, or something that states that it's just the users of the water. But, you know, can't that be amended so that all the residents? Because at some point, the people that have wells may need to hook into city water. I mean, to be honest with you, you know, I don't have any children going to school, and I pay the taxes for that. You know, it's like, you know, so people don't use the water, I mean, they don't have to pay for that? I mean, it's for a resident of Minatrista, this is upgrading our city and that too. So I'm just wondering if that law that I heard, I'm not sure, but if that can be amended?
Well, maybe, Ms. Maud, maybe we'll have our attorney address that question.
I think what you're referring to was in previous discussions, the council was talking about PFA financing. And that really is related to users. One of the things that's gonna be discussed later tonight, as Mr. Barone said, is looking, now that we've changed the plan, the timing is different, the cost is significantly lower, what are the other financing options? And so I think that that issue will be revisited later this evening.
Oh, okay, great. And then one other thing, I just wanna thank all of the city council members and staff for all your hard work on this. And it's been such a rough road, but thank you.
And just one thing that Mr. Barone didn't point out, and I would like to point out, 'cause I think there's some questions about it. The water treatment facilities are our number-one priority. We know that the water quality and color and smell is bad. We know that, and we are very concerned about that, and we want you to have good-quality water. So this is our number-one priority. And we're not shirking our responsibilities or kicking the bucket down the road, and we are not delaying things, we are moving forward as fast as we possibly can. So, just so you know that. Next, Mr. Bushnell, are you interested?
I'll pass for a moment.
For the moment? Then second row, we'll start here behind Mr. Bushnell. Okay? Randy? Okay? Next row, over here? Anybody? Any? Okay.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name's Jessica Downey. I live at 943 Hunter's Court. I've lived here for about a year and a half, and ever since I've lived here, the water that comes into my home...
Good evening.
My name's Jessica Downey. I live at 943 Hunter's Court. I've lived here for about a year and a half. And ever since I've lived here, the water that comes into my home is a light brown color. And every time you flush it, it is a bright orange color. That bright water has been tested. For you guys to sit here and tell us that the water is safe, coming into our home like that is a lie. And it's insulting to our intelligence. It is, it's not safe. And so I am very, very disturbed that you're telling us it's safe. It's not. I have three small children, my husband and my family, in this community. And I am not comfortable drinking the water. And I shouldn't have to live like that. I shouldn't. It is each and every one of you, your responsibility to make sure that the water that comes into our home is safe. And I'm glad to hear, Mr. Barone, I'm glad to hear that the Minnesota Department of Health is very well aware of this.
Oh, yeah.
But that tells me, tells me one thing, that they're in your pocket and nothing's been done. So this, this is what's gonna happen. We're having to have complaints on a national level because you guys are not getting this done. It has been years. You continue to tell us you're gonna do something about the water. What's getting done? Nothing. You have said the water needs to be fixed. There's a problem with the water. You all admit it, everyone of you. And it's not getting done. So until this is resolved, what do you want us, the residents, to do with the water problem? What do we do until then? Because the water that's coming into my home is not safe.
Maybe I can let Mr. Barone answer that because I think he gave some options in his presentation, water filter being one of them. Mr. Barone, maybe you could. And then we can also ask Mr. Roersch in the back. I mean, he might be able to give you some ideas as well.
Yeah, I'll let Tom address the safety of it. The water's not safe. It looks horrible, smells horrible, tastes horrible, but it's not unsafe. It's safe. I wouldn't want to drink it, I agree with you. But it is safe. These are what people are telling us that know more about water than I do, so.
What are, what are some of the things that the residents could do in their own home to maybe?
You want to back that up, David, to the?
Make the water a little more desirable, at least.
You can do a home filter. You can drain your hot water heater. You can, if you have a water softener, you can add some iron out to it. What you're trying to do is get rid of those heavy metals, the iron and the manganese. That's, that's the predominant pollutant, if you want to call it that, in our water. Everybody has those issues in Minnesota. Not everybody has water treatment. Like, everybody has water treatment like us. We're one of the few cities that are, that are metro, that are still working on water treatment, so.
So in other words, we need to do an independent test to show you that the water's not safe? And that's what we'll have to do?
Well, you can do that, but that's not gonna speed this timeline up anymore. That's kind of my point with giving you the.
And we as residents shouldn't have to go through all the costs of doing this. So not only do we feel we have safe water, but we don't have to smell the chlorine. We don't have to smell the awful smells to it. We shouldn't have to do that.
Chlorine's there to kill the bacteria, so you want that.
Putting excessive amounts in it. Because I shouldn't be able to turn my water on and smell chlorine that's such a hard smell that I can smell it like I would have opened a bottle of bleach. That's not safe. You can tell me it's safe. You can tell me you're doing your tests and that it's safe, but it's not.
Well, I guess we're gonna have to agree to disagree because from what I understand, the water's safe to drink. It's terrible to, you might have to hold your nose and drink it. I understand that, but it's safe to drink.
Either way, we shouldn't have to. We shouldn't have to.
That's why this council.
We pay a lot of money for this city.
And that's why we're working on a solution.
Hold on, hold on. Again, you're a new resident, so welcome. But the council here, there's three people that are new on the council. And we've been here a very short period of time. And we are addressing this as best we can, as quickly as we can, so.
Wasn't it already addressed with the old council and resolved? And it was supposed to be put in place? And we were months away from having that be put in place?
The old council.
When it came and it changed?
No, the old council took, as Mr. Barone pointed out, they worked on this until from October of 20, no, excuse me.
Summer of 2013.
Summer of 2013 until December. And they were no more closer to a result, to a solution than we are today. And today, we have some of the design work completed. And we are moving forward. And we're going to continue moving forward in as productive and expedient way as possible. And I just, we've made a decision based on costs that we should do a decentralized system. The result is the same. You're gonna get the same quality of water as if you, we did a centralized system. The difference being is you're gonna pay a whole lot less. And you're gonna get the same quality of water.
So to piggyback on what the mayor's saying, we had a plan in place in December of 2013. In early part of 2014, the council changed directions and went with a different option. And we spent all of 2014 exploring that option. That wasn't anything that staff did, that's what the council wanted to do. That was proven with a nineteen and a half million dollar price tag, it cost too much. We had a 5-0 vote last December, which was not, three people of this council weren't there in December.
I was there.
Well, you were there, but.
I was one, and then there were.
5-0 to stop, that's way too expensive. Yeah, we get you your water, but we have an option now that will get the same result for less money. By not having a one plant source, having two plant sources makes it a lot less money. Mostly due to the number, number of miles of pipe. The centralized plant was calling for about 12 miles of pipe at a cost of around nine or 10 million dollars to put in. To pipe all the raw water from the wells to the one plant and then pipe it back out once it's been cleaned to residents. The two decentralized plant, one in the north, one that serves the south central, only about two miles of pipe. That's the huge cost savings that we're seeing.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your comments. We will take them to heart, believe me.
There's something I would like to say though. Part of what was just said there, I think everybody knows is not true. The reason this thing was put on hold in December, because it was quite clear, we were ready to sign a contract with Bolt &amp; Make, which is a very reputable water treatment firm. The reason it got put on hold is because we knew the new council was coming in, was gonna shut this down. And we didn't want to waste a month's worth of engineering cost on knowing that something was gonna get shut down. We were ready to go on. So I want to make it crystal clear that we had a plan in place, we were gonna go with it. The old council did not shut that down. That's why I voted against the decentralized system.
So the old council wanted to go forward with a nearly $20 million project?
That's not exactly true.
Okay, all right.
Like I say, I want to make it clear here, what was said there. I want to make sure everybody understands what happened here.
Okay, fair enough, Mr. Vanderlinde. Next.
I'm Crystal Johnson. I live at 4729 Rebanzer Drive in Minnetrista. I run the blog, Fix Our Water Now, Minnetrista, which I started in 2013 when I had this water come out of my faucets for the first time. This is the same water that I had tested and found by Pelican, by a lab, that I didn't have to pay for because the person who came to my home and saw this was so disturbed. They found seven times the amount of arsenic that's allowed in your home by the EPA. You can say this water is safe to drink, and I believe you. But I only believe you because maybe it's fine to drink this afternoon, but that constant exposure over time is not okay. And the city has wasted time by not updating this water treatment system. And what I find extremely disheartening, two things, two main things today, is that we didn't get our hydrant flushing warning, which I worked very hard for last council. Because that comes into our homes at a time, you know, five, six o'clock at night, when we're bathing our children and feeding our children. And they have to sit in that orange water. And it's not okay. I'm pretty sure you wouldn't bathe your children in that water. The way the warnings were set up last time is that the council members contacted the presidents of the HOAs, and they sent out an email last to residents signing up for it. So it's really disheartening to hear that you guys have lost that list because everyone is looking forward to those, especially with the warmer weather, knowing that this is a Band-Aid solution.
Sure.
To the bigger problem. And then the other thing that's really disheartening is that I talked to residents who say, "We voted on this. We voted for a centralized system." And the way I understand it is that vote was almost split down the middle between an RO centralized and a gravity filtration centralized system.
It was a survey, not a vote.
Survey, vote, but it was still the residents' voice, right?
400 of the residents, yeah. Well, there's 1,100 users. I've just, that's why I pointed out my PowerPoint, there was 1,100 users, we had 400 respondents.
But still, the city had taken the time to send that survey out.
Yep.
And the people who answered, that was the most important thing to them at the time. And the option for the centralized gravity filtration had the option to be upgraded to an RO system in the future, had it come down to that by a state level even, if that was an option. And so now, moving forward with the decentralized system that you guys are proposing, finding out that one of the three treatment centers is, is scheduled or planned for inside of Hunter's Crest is ridiculous. And that is a possibility, you had mentioned at the last meeting. But I don't think anyone who lives in Hunter's Crest wants to look out their window and see an above ground water tower. And I know you're looking at underground storage, but the fact that we spoke and we wanted a centralized system, and that's completely ignored and overturned, is ridiculous. And I feel as if you're moving forward with these eight engineer firms for the new RFP, you should add centralized back into that RFP so we can see the differences for ourselves and give us those rates and let us decide again. Because we're the ones paying for it.
Thank you. Just a few comments. One, the, the third plant, if you will, down the road when it's needed, wouldn't necessarily be in Hunter's Crest. It would be somewhere down in the southwestern area. So just, just for clarification on that. And the other thing, a centralized system, and I've spoken to a number of people that said, oh, they voted for the centralized system because they were under the impression that it was the least expensive system. So I think if you were to redo another survey, people would say they want the least expensive system that will give them the, the good water that they expect. And that's what this council decided on, the lesser expensive system. And we ran the numbers, and you probably, you probably don't know this, but when Ms. Maud asked about the increase, we're talking a two to four percent increase over the next five years each. With the centralized system, that nearly $20 million price tag would raise your rates by almost 70 or over 70% in the next five years. Not only that, but if we were to stop this forward progress right now, then the neighbor, the lady sitting right next to you would be very angry at us because yet it's another step backwards and another halt in the project. So we're not gonna do that. I'm not gonna mince words here. We're moving forward with a decentralized system. We've, we're voted in to make these difficult, very difficult decisions for the community. And we feel this is in the very best interest of the community, not just from a price tag, not just from water quality, but also from the impacts to residents in our community. So I don't think we need to argue about that. I, we clearly understand your position, and we appreciate you sharing those thoughts with us. But this decision has been made, and we're sticking to it.
And that's another thing that was missing from Mr. Barone's presentation was well 2A. You said all the wells were functioning and tested on a regular basis and are up to quality, but well 2A, right, is completely shut down because of the radium levels, right?
It's blended with another well.
In the center, it's blended, but it's completely shut down.
Maybe we can have our engineer.
Well, that's not correct. I mean, well 2A kicks on at a certain point, but it's not allowed to run when well, when well 1 is not running. So it's a blended because the water has to be blended. And it has to get the radium level low enough to meet.
So what is high in radium?
Many cities in the metro area have that same issue. They have to do the exact same thing, or they have treatment plants in order to handle that, filter that material out, which is what we're in the process of doing.
So Mr. Hornby, would it be fair to say that you use well 2 as little as possible? And then it's blended when you do need to use it so that the radium levels are fairly low? And also, will the gravity filtration system that's being designed, right, that we're, that we've authorized, will that eliminate that issue?
The, the design for that plant would reduce that radium amount down, keep it in the safe levels. Would stay, that well would still stay in service. It's in service today. Like I said, one, it can't run though, it's programmed, so it cannot run unless well 1 is also running.
Okay.
So it's a blended, so it's a blended water so that that radium level is down below to meet the health standards.
Having been through this situation last year, I mean, we've done all the same things already. We've had these special meetings scheduled, and we've shown up, and we've brought residents, and we've spoken out. And we got to the point where we were last year with having a plan in place. And it's my understanding that because, starting in January, when you decided to move away from this plan, that you lost special financing from the state for the PFA?
We haven't lost it. We're just probably not gonna pursue that option, but that's going to be a discussion later on in the meeting.
So the designs would have had you have been in by March 31st? Are you still planning on getting that?
No, that's not gonna happen.
That's not gonna happen.
So how, how much will the interest rates jump?
Probably a lot less than what it would cost the difference between that plant, the centralized.
Yeah, I guess, would you rather spend seven, eight more million in principal or lose a million and a half of interest? I guess I'd rather take the.
Well, like I said, Ms. Jensen Bartol, a decision has been made. We're not going back to the centralized plant. We are doing decentralized. We're moving forward. We're getting the bids from the engineering firms. Once they're in, we are moving forward.
And not listening to the residents afterward?
No, that's, that's not true. We're, we're listening. We have, we have a lot of different opinions. And some are for it, some are against it, some are neutral. I mean, so we have to weigh all of that. And we can't take your opinion over, let's say, somebody else's opinion. We have to weigh and balance, do a balancing act, if you will, and figure out what is in the best interest of the residents, so.
2016, we'll be right here in the same box, talking.
I hope not. I hope not. Okay.
This is how you guys work.
Well, we just took office, so I'm not sure that. So next person? Anybody? Then behind, yes? Okay?
I'm Dr. S. Doctor, I'm from Hunter's Crest. I was asking, I was curious about the water increase in our water rates last summer. I just want to look everybody now, I just tell you, you've got a lot of gall, raising my rates. And I'm still sitting here having the same discussion, drinking the same crappy water. And I, and I don't, I don't want to hear anybody talk about it, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't, you're on the city now.
Right, and we are trying. Yeah, exactly.
So I understand in the real world, rates go up, blah, 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 but talk about insult to injury. You went around, raised everybody's rates, and I still got the same dumpy water. And I realize that's changing. I realize you've got a plan in place. I appreciate it. The schedule seems aggressive, you're doing, you're doing your due diligence. I appreciate that. But now I'm sitting here, I'm listening to a 2% to 4% increase, again, for the next five years. My suggestion is that you start to pluck down some of that now, maybe decrease 18 months, five years, three and a half years for us.
And, and I think we'll look at, I mean, Mr., we definitely will be looking at that. I can't make any promises right now, but I completely understand your, your concern about the rates. I think Ms. Maud had kind of pointed that out as well. We're, we're gonna look at how we can make it as affordable as possible. And that is one of the reasons we went to the decentralized one. Because had we gone to the centralized one, it would have been even.
Seven, eight, 10.
Well, I, I don't, I'm not asking you guys to go on the cheap. Because in 10 or 15 years, I don't want to be, I don't want to be revisiting what we're gonna do to patch.
Exactly, sure.
In the water system, so I understand that, but if you talk about value.
Right.
You know, what am I paying for? I was, I was paying for the water I was getting.
Exactly. No, I, I understand. I, we do.
I agree with that, but, you know, if we credit your bill or credit a number of people's bills, where do you think we get the money to pay for the water treatment?
Yeah, I get everything they're talking about.
We'd have to come back and increase it later.
I'm not done with that.
You know, I, I know that, but I'm just saying, you know, if I had one resident send me an email and say, "I want a refund." It's like, well, if we give you a refund, then somewhere down the road, we're gonna ask you for an increase to cover that refund, to pay for this. I mean, we don't have a magic money tree to help finance.
We don't have magic money trees either.
A lot of people say the, well, I'll just let the city pay for it. Well, you guys are the ones paying for it. You're the city when it comes to this kind of stuff. So.
But we'll look at, at rates and again, try and make them as reasonable as possible. That's all I can tell you.
As the, as the mayor said, that's one, and Mr. Barone as well, that is why we went with the decentralized versus the centralized. Is because the, the main line, the water main for the centralized was $9 million in itself, and that's cost prohibitive. We're trying, in trying to be fair to what is fair in raising the rates. And also, if you go back and listen to any of the tapes of the prior council meetings since January, when we talk about the water treatment facility or solution, in almost every one of those meetings, we talk about. in almost every one of those meetings, we talk about, we've got to get better water to the people in Hunter's Crest. They've been waiting too long. And so that also is, um, a reason why one of the, uh, whether it's an under, uh, underground storage tank or a water tower, uh, whatever the solution might be to have that as close to Hunter's Crest to get you the best water possible as soon as possible is, uh, is a high priority. Now, nothing at this level moves fast enough. If in, in one of Mr. Veroni's solutions, as far as a filter, there are reverse osmosis systems available for your home, um.
Which also takes out the chlorine, but we're putting in.
Right, yeah.
Okay, they, they do, uh, by personal experience, they do a very good job of getting out the rust colored and, and that sort of thing. So doing your laundry or just aesthetically, it looks better. And from the testing that we've done and been required to do, we are being told by the experts that we're using that the water is safe. Does it look good? Would you want to drink it? Would you want to bathe yourself or your child in it? Absolutely not. Um, but.
Well, there's, but there, it's not, and that's why we're moving forward. And that's why we're trying to move forward as fast as possible. Um, there are, there are also solutions for your personal systems. And it, you don't have to spend a lot of money. You can even rent it for the next year and a half until the plants are up and running. That might be one option. I know other people that I've spoken to have invested a certain amount of money into their own systems, uh, treatment systems, and they work quite well. So, um, if you don't have any system whatsoever, you might want to check into renting one. You might want to check into buying one. They're not hugely expensive. In order to clean up your water, you could get something fairly inexpensively. But like I said, we're, we're working on it. We're not ignoring the problem and we're trying to do it as expediently as possible.
RRO.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm, no, just a second. Just a minute.
And our RRO is seventeen hundred dollars.
Okay. I'm not talking about RO. There's other systems available to take out the manganese and, and the iron. So with that, I'm going to just continue. Um, Mr. Bushnell, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, Bill Bushnell at nine forty Maple Crest Drive. Uh, I've got a couple of comments and a question, if I can. To begin the comments, I can really empathize with the people of Hunter's Crest. Uh, when I moved in, uh, a bit longer ago than some of you are saying, uh, I was on a private well. I had the water that you're talking about. It was disgusting. Every sink and every toilet in the house was brown. Looked like I was up on the iron range in a public toilet somewhere because everything was iron brown. And I realized that I probably got a better price for my house because of that. The person that was there wanted to do it out. Uh, there is a solution, as the mayor just alluded to that. I, personally, I ended up calling Colorant. I went out and bought a water softener, then I had some people look at it, and they said, put, take your water softener back. Because just like you said, it's not going to last. It can't handle that. It's not meant to do that. Your RO system is having the same trouble. They told me rent is going to be cheaper. You're not going to have to replace the equipment. And I'll tell you, Colorant was out in my house at least once a month, sometimes once a week, servicing their equipment, even replacing their equipment, hauling out the old one because I killed it with my well. And, uh, long story short, it didn't cost me that much. And I had clean water for a period of time. That's, that's what I dealt with until, thank God, I got city water. Came through. I couldn't wait for city water. When they redid our street, I said, one thing we insist on, put the pipe in the ground, even though you don't have a well down there yet, because we want to be ready. We don't want to pay for that cost twice when it tear up our street twice. Uh, as it turned out, now we're on city water and, uh, and that made a big difference. But I'll come back to that. I did want to add one more comment. Uh, and I think this was brought up, but I want to clarify. Uh, Councilmember Van der Linde commented about honesty and, and forthrightness and, and truthfulness here. And I was one of the people that filled out that blue postcard. And I checked centralized system. Because right on that postcard, it said, the centralized system is the cheapest significantly. And that's the reason I picked it as a logical taxpayer. I said, why pay the more expensive one? So I chose that. So I'm one of the votes that went the wrong way because I got lied to, pardon me for using that terminology, but apparently that, that postcard was not accurate. And we're now learning a decentralized system is cheaper. And that made sense to me as a logical person. I said, I don't understand how centralized can be cheaper, but they're telling me it is, so I'm going to vote for it. So that's my own dumbness. So I, I have, I have to stick that one on myself. Uh, my question, uh, being on Maple Crest Drive, and this gets back to my, now I'm on city water. This is wonderful. And you may be wondering why I'm saying that. Uh, Maple Crest Drive until very recently was end of pipe. It was the last, very end of the water line from the northern system. And if you know anything about water systems, the end of the line is always the dirtiest, filthiest, has the most iron in it because it has no place to go. It's not running out down the street to the next development. It's coming in my house. So that's what I, that's what I've got. Uh, when I got on city water, I bought my own water softener again because I didn't want to keep paying Colorant every month. So I bought my own softener and I called the city and I said, okay, where do I set my softener at? What's the hardness of your water? How much iron is in it? And when I heard what the numbers were, I said, why did I buy a water softener? I don't need one. My water is so good, I've got that water softener extended the bare, bare minimum. And, uh, so I'm fortunate. And I realize you don't have that down in the, in the central and southern end of the city. And that needs to be dealt with. But, uh, my question then comes from that. Since we have such good water in the northern part of the city, is there a cost savings to not building a plant up there now that we're on decentralized? And phasing it in, building that plant later? Does that ease the burden on the, uh, on the water users in terms of their total cost?
Um, I might ask Mr. Hornby to chime in a little bit on this, but I do know that you may be somebody that doesn't really have issues, but I know we do have some issues there. Not as predominant as the south system, but we do have some issues there. Then there's also some economies of scale. To build them separately would probably cost us more than to build them at the same time. So there's a couple of reasons working as to why that, but I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Paul?
I think, um, you're exactly right that we're looking at this as a complete package. There were items that were in the plan previously that did phase, uh, different portions of the water system. It's, you know, in a whole, over a few years, that was to help spread out that cost. What we've done now in this RFP, services, we've added both water treatment plants. We included in the same plan that we did together. Also includes, um, an elevated tank, um, and, and review of the water distribution system. The elevated tank could be done later, but the intent is to get that information now to determine that. So all those are lumped together in this project. When we go through the RFPs and review them, then we'll go through and sort out what's in the best interest of the city from, from each, um, each consultant that proposes on it.
So that's not cast in stone at this point. You're.
Correct.
And I understand costs are only going to go up, so maybe it's better to build it now, but.
And as time goes on, you know, steel goes up in price, uh, construction goes up in price. Materials just have, don't have a habit of falling in price. So the longer you wait, I think you're going to overall have a more expensive project. So the idea is to get as much done as soon as you can.
One last comment before I leave. It just slid through my mind here. Uh, when I was fighting with my water system off my well, I bought an RO system. And I never installed it because I read the instructions that came with it. One of the things it says is that iron destroys RO filters. That it said, do not put this on your system if you've got a lot of iron. And I would be, as you tell your people, have mentioned, changing my filters all the time to do that. And that doesn't make sense. And that's why I went with a different type of system, that Colorant serviced and, and filtered the iron and the, and the other contaminants in another way. So maybe an RO is not the best system anyway, uh, given the iron that we have in our water here.
Thank you. Anybody else on, on this side of the aisle that wish, come to the podium? And then you're next, okay?
Hi, my name is Letitia Moreau, and I live twenty-six ninety-five North Sanders Lake Drive. I've been living there for, uh, four or five years, four years, no, three years. Um, I would like to ask you, um, whether you could put a, a permission available online about the, you know, the quality, uh, data quality, the samples, uh, of the current, um, situation? And also about the projects, the alternatives? And I'm, uh, you know, I was, I've been listening, maybe I missed some, but, uh, I'm really not absolutely clear what you are asking the water treatment, uh, system to do? And how you're going to measure your success? I, uh, you use words like centralized, decentralized. Now I understand decentralized means impact two centers, right?
Yep, more than one.
More than one.
Well, decentralized, I thought it was by the people. All right, got that. Uh, and that, the radium was mentioned because we forget, uh, you know, we said it's all good, but there is this radiant thing, so is it included? Uh, I remember also last year, there was a problem with the chlorine treatment. So is it something that is going to happen again? But, you know, it's, uh, I remember I had a really, uh, a problem with the drinking, with the water, um, at the sink, unusual. So I'm concerned how you are handling your treatment, um, monitoring, and, you know, twice a week, uh, or once a week, or is it online? Um, right? And, um, yeah, it's, it's very interesting to listen to everybody and understand, uh, and, uh, maybe I would like, you know, if you give more data, this would be like more, uh, understandable for everybody, but it seems that, uh, the water is not the same quality everywhere. It's not the same quality in time. Might be, that raises concern, you know? Yes, the samples are good, uh, the ones you pulled, but apparently what the people pull in their houses is not good always, or is it the same water? Uh, probably, you know, it's a doubt. Do you really, uh, you know, I heard about flushing, flushing. I'm not sure I exactly understand it. You mean that you, you know, everything accumulates on the pipe and you flush the pipe to get the dirt out? That's, and when you're doing that, you send everything to, to the people, right? That's the, is it, did I get it or?
Well, maybe we could have a lot of questions, so.
Yeah, I'm sure. And are you going, well, are you going to continue having flushing as a normal procedure? Is it something that, you know, are you going to eliminate that with the water?
Yeah, okay. So, number of questions that you have. So let, let me address a couple first, and then I'm going to refer some of your questions to our staff. So let's talk about communication. I think you bring up an excellent point. And I'm sorry I didn't mention it earlier. Um, when we started receiving these calls and emails from residents, I immediately contacted staff and then I met with staff on a number of different occasions. And my biggest concern was communication. There obviously was a communication breakdown. And that's what caused the, the, the emails and so on. And again, on the city's behalf, I, I completely apologize for that. When I talked to them, I said, what I'd like to see is I'd like to see on our website, a specific tab simply and only for the water treatment facilities. So if you go to the website, you can hit this tab and you can get all the information that you might want or need regarding the plan or the, the progress. Number one, the progress, uh, what the plan is. Also, the test results. I said, we should be posting our test results. Why not post them on, on our city website? So we're going to be posting the webs, um, the results. We're going to be, um, updating the residents on the progress and where we're at. Uh, I also suggested that we actually post this PowerPoint. So if people want to review it again, they're welcome to. In addition to that, um, one, as Ms. Barlow Jensen pointed out, there used to be an email bl- blast to residents, um, letting them know about the flushing. We are going to try and implement that again. We, we should. And so if you're interested in being on that email list, please let the city know and leave us your email. So when your neighborhood is being flushed, you should receive an email. In addition to that, I stated that I think we should also continue the, um, the signs that are, um, I think they call them sandwich signs that are posted in the neighborhoods to let you know, maybe forty-eight hours or whatever it is in advance, that flushing will occur. Some of the other things too, uh, we, we're going to be putting now the schedule on the website in terms of when the flushing will occur and what neighborhoods. And we're also, and I also suggested that we post it and send it out with our, um, Minatrista messenger. Now, it won't be in this next one possibly, um, because that's already done. It's at the printers and it's going out soon. But in subsequent ones, we will add that. So these are, um, and then also what we will be starting up is under staff reports at every single council meeting, we'll be doing a brief update on the water facilities if it hasn't previously been discussed in the meetings. And then that way, if you want, you can always go to our website on the YouTube and you can click on there and you can go to and, and watch it there. So you can see what's being done and, and what the newest update is. Now regarding flushing, that was another of your questions, right? Um, I'm going to have our engineer address flushing, how often it's done, how it's done and why.
Well, they typically flush twice a year, but then we also look and address, um, areas that are more problematic. We'll flush the lines more often. Oftentimes you'll find a dead end water main will collect more sediment. And so what you try to do is you, you flush till you're going downstream. So you're not flushed, the intent is not to push all that sediment into a home. There's a hydrant open on the end of the line with the intent is to blow all that sediment out that hydrant. That's where the sediment is supposed to go. But as a consequence of doing flushing, you do get some of the material in the service pipes. So that's why in Mr. Veroni's presentation, he indicated that it's important to do a few things such as drain your water heater after we've done, or a portion of it, after we've done the flushing. So you can get some of that sediment out of the bottom of your water heater if you have the time to do it. At least once a year, it's good to flush your water heater once a year anyway. The other item is to let the water run in a low area in the home. It's very important. Before you start, uh, running that water around those to, is, before they start flushing, is shut that bypass valve off on your water softener if you have one. That keeps that iron out of your water softener. So what you're trying to do is keep that out of your mechanics and, and running it out of your lowest bigot in the home. And that helps clear that line. Once you get it out of the lowest bigot, then run, run them up on the successive floors to clean the system out. That's the best way to address, address it after flushing. If you're on, are on a line and wish your flushing more periodic, you know, more often because it happens to be a problematic line, you may be subject to that more often, or as one of the gentlemen who spoke, you might want to look at maybe a temporary lease of the system that can help filter some of that out.
Okay. And did you say you're going to, with the water treatment facility, you're going to continue, you plan to eliminate flushing? Because I've lived forever outside of here. I never had any flushing in my life. So I came here and there's flushing, but.
You will always have, in any kind of a maintenance on a water system, you're going to flush the lines, whether you have a, um, water treatment plant or you don't. Because what that does is that you do get an accumulation of material in the line over time and you're going to flush that material out. You're not going to get as much of it in the system, um, when you have a filtration plant. You're going to remove the majority of it. Your water, if you bring it out of the faucet, the water's going to be clear. That's what you're looking at from an aesthetic standpoint. That's what you're looking at from a filtration plant. Doesn't matter if it's centralized. Doesn't matter if it's decentralized. It does the same thing. What it does is just provides water treatment where it's needed.
Well, so the water treatment is not going to remove the particles?
It will to the, to a great extent.
It'll remove the iron and manganese, yes.
Um, what is the other thing that is there? It's not the iron and manganesees?
Well, those are, that's the primary thing that the plant would handle, along with some of the other items. Uh, radium will take out. It'll take out some other items such as that. And, you know, Tom, if you have any other things to add, go ahead, but it's, uh, the plant, you'll get a good quality water, but just because you have a water treatment plant doesn't mean you're not going to flush the lines. You're going to do that as a general practice anyway.
And what's left?
Do you do it less frequently?
All this, because you know, it's already good at the sampling level. So, and then it's not good in the pipe, right? Or it's good where you sample for being in the drinking, uh, drinking quality. Uh, but it's not good when you're looking at some pipes or some places. So how is it going to be good, uh, if you, if there are still some stuff in it?
What's going to end up happening in Minatrista's situation is there's been a number of years of accumulation of iron and manganese in your system. We've seen samples of it come in. If the water looks horrible. It's going to take some time to blow that out of the system. So once we have water treatment on this, online, we're going to continue to flush lines to get that material out. And that may occur over a longer period of time.
You're saying that we have a lot of this in the, in the pipes, so it's going to take years to get out.
Yeah.
So it's not going to be immediately good also.
The day we start the plant, I wouldn't expect that your water is going to be crystal clear. It's, it takes some time to get out of the system. This, this last, this, just so you know, this last flushing incident we had, we ran between.
The chlorine thing?
No, the last thing.
No, the last flushing that they just did.
Last week when we flushed the water mains, we ran about hundred and seventy thousand gallons of water out of the system. Hundred and seventy thousand gallons. That's a lot of water we ran out of there to clear the water system. So it lowered the tank so much that the wells started to kick back on, to refill the wells. So, just so you know, we do take this seriously, we do take a lot of effort to try to clear the line. There was a complaint that was made, not all the staff was in place in order to address the situation, through vacations and so forth. But the city does best to address the situation at the time.
Okay, alright, thank you, then we're gonna.
The chlorine one you didn't answer.
Which, I'm sorry?
The chlorine problem of last year.
Okay, I'm not.
I'm not aware of what that was, actually.
Well, there was a moment that the, the water was distinct, it was, obviously had a chlorine problem. And that was what was confirmed on fourteen.
Paul, that's where our chlorine pump just happened.
Gary, can you, can you come to a microphone and maybe address that? We're not aware of.
So it doesn't happen again?
Okay, thank you. Gary, you could maybe address that, thank you.
Yeah, we had an incident with a chlorine pump that did not shut off in proper time.
Okay.
We have to do periodic maintenance on these things, we rebuild them every year. We change our injectors three times a year. And on the one pump that was just redone, we had a bad injector, actually from, with a bad check valve, from the actual factory, it was just replaced. And so it did not shut off at the proper time, so it actually went too, too much in there, in the chlorine. So people upstream got the higher smell, but we were, we detected right away, we found out, you know, that's why we flushed the system to get the water moving through there.
Okay.
So that's what that, that she's referring to.
So is there some way of testing, once you've like reworked on a system, replaced some parts and whatnot? Is there some way of testing to make sure it works?
Yeah, yes, it's all tested and it's redone. They actually tested at the factory, for some reason, there was a, there was, this one just had a bad seat in it, and it did not seat well. Because we did send it back for testing on it. But after it is replaced and after we do flushing, we do have to, we do our chlorine residual checks at the end of the lines, and we do maintain them. That's, we, we're constantly adjusting to make sure that we're keeping those proper levels.
And there, it's a, it's a mechanical system, just like your car. You can take it in to get the oil changed, and then a week later, your radiator breaks, so, you know, just like these. We don't want it to happen, but it does happen. It, it may happen again, I hope not, but that's why these guys have this whole SCADA system set up to monitor it. Once they found out, they went and addressed the issue.
Okay. And quickly then.
I am sorry, I'm an engineer, and I know very well about pumps and, you know, and, but if something happens like this, everybody should be informed immediately and should be detected immediately, not that I have to call.
Yeah, and that, that might be part of our communication.
Sure, mechanics fail, also, you know, but that's why the quality is there, to check and also, and you know, ensure
Right.
the customer is not affected, whatever happens at the plant.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a general comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Gary, that is what happened in September, right?
Pardon?
It was September that that chlorine valve actually broke.
Yeah, I believe it was somewhere around there, yeah.
Okay.
It just affected the, on well five.
That night, my baby broke out, interrashed.
That wasn't, I don't think that was your well.
We had chlorine in September.
That was well five, which is self-contained to the central system, that's what's smart in the central system, it does not go anywhere else. But to North-South Saunders and to the Cardinal Cove area.
And I know South Saunders and North Saunders were affected by it, but that would not have affected Hunter's Crest.
No.
Now, I'm going to go to this gentleman here in the front, I wanted to make question or comment.
Sure. Good evening, and thank you for reconsidering the, the options and choosing one that seems to accommodate cost and also growth. So, you know, I've seen projections about the city of Minatrista and how the residents, the number of residents will grow. Is that in line with past growth? Or is it, is it, are we going to be growing at a faster rate than we have historically? And are those new members going to be, you know, put on the city system and share in that cost? And my name's Dave Wilson, twenty-six thirty-five North Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Good questions. Mr. Veroni, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, I can give Brian a chance here to chime in, but if, whatever is built now is put on the water system. So those new users become new rate payers, so, yeah, so I don't know if you want to talk about that.
And we're projecting about seventy-five new units coming online each year. I know some of the studies from last year had Bolton Make using a hundred and sixty units per year, which we as staff thought was, it was met council projections, which we as staff think is, it's way too high to be basing, you know, rolling the dice on basically for your projections for rate increases. So we're using seventy-five new homes a year, we saw about a hundred last year.
Which is good.
So, which is good, so that gives a little, you know, buffer wiggle room, I guess. So that's what we're using going forward, based on what we're seeing from the developers, hearing from, you know, using past history also. And we had a few down years where we were doing more in the thirty to forty, but now we think we'll be back up towards seventy-five to a hundred.
And it's all cyclical, so the seventy-five we're looking at as an average, as Mr. Grimm mentioned, last year is roughly a hundred, that includes, there weren't all single-family homes, but it was a hundred new units. The last three years, if you add all three up, it was around a hundred. So, you know, as we came out of the recession, we had a hundred over three years, last year we had a hundred by itself. So if you do some averaging, you know, we're projecting it, even with the cyclical nature, we're looking at around seventy-five. If we get more, that's a good thing, because that will help pay for the cost of this.
Hopefully bring rates down.
And the decentralized system will accommodate that growth?
Yeah.
Even at the.
Yeah.
Right, we've done some projections, and fifteen hundred gallons per minute total combined will take us out to the twenty-thirty mark that the centralized system would have as well. And to the growth rate, that's one thing that we will be, I know Rusty, this gentleman in the back with the orange jacket had mentioned about rates. And so we're going to be watching the growth projections, because that could positively impact your, your water rates as well. So we'll keep an eye on that. If we're doing a hundred and fifty homes a year and we're only projecting seventy-five, we may not have to raise your rates. So we're going to be, keep a close eye on that.
And the other thing to keep in mind, as the mayor mentioned, we, we'd like to have a lot of continued growth. But what we want to make sure we do is when people want to move here, they're going to have good water. So if we would just do status quo, I don't think our growth weights, growth rate would go up. I think people just find somewhere else to live where the water's treated. Here, we don't have treated water, we want to be in the category of treated water, so it's a desirable place for people to come and live.
Sure. And I'm curious, water bills, you know, on average, per peer communities, I mean, how, my water bill seemed high when I moved here ten years ago, so.
Right, right now, we're right, we're right about in the middle. When we did our rate study last fall of, or, fall of thirteen, we looked at about twelve, I don't know, eight comparable communities, eight to ten, and we were right in the middle about, as far as water rates. So obviously with the water treatment plant, we'll move more to the top, but we'll have treated water, so.
Sure. And just last comment, the, the discussion about flushing and a hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons of water going down the drain.
Yeah.
Is there a way to economically capture that and repurpose that water? I mean, I don't know if other cities do that, but, you know, water my lawn with it or something, you know?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good comment, yeah.
Not in March, might not do much difference, make much difference.
Good comment, maybe we could get the fire trucks and fill the fire, I mean, yeah, that's a good comment. Maybe, Mr. Hornby, I mean, can you answer that? That does seem a waste.
Well, there's, there's other ways to recapture water. The idea, what I was trying to project with that is, we ran a lot of water through the system to try to assist some people with water quality issues. That is not optimal, the city is also responsible to keep within its appropriations by permit that is issued by the DNR. And so when we look at our appropriations, generally you count for about seven to nine percent is lost water. Well, when you're, you have one flushing incident that has that much water, it's kind of hard to meet that appropriations requirement from the DNR. So it's also important for the city to get onto that, get treated water, so we can reduce that amount of water use drastically from what we have today. That's part of the goal of all this. To repurpose it, I don't think the water that we flushed out, you probably wouldn't want it to water your yards, because your yards might be orange. And I have seen that in the past, people have private wells, they're more shallow, they're in the drift, not in a, not in bedrock like the city wells are. You can tell who's got an irrigation system, because the side of the house is orange, the street is orange, the trees are orange, the grass is orange. And it's all iron staining, and that's from a private well. The idea in, in this new system is that you'll get that iron out of the water. Again, fifteen hundred gallon per minute water treatment system, whether it's centralized, decentralized, does the same thing. And provides the same capacity, and takes the iron and manganese out, which is what's desirable.
So in other words, we don't have a way to capture that, but good idea, good idea.
I'd like to just touch on Mr. Grimm's point, as far as the, the cost, and your question about the cost of the water. Mr. Grimm, wouldn't it be true also that one of the reasons that Minatrista's rates are what they are is because a fair amount of the land in Minatrista, I mean, we, we have the, the advantage or luxury of having some lakes, which obviously there aren't homes built on those, so they, that's, there's, you know, lower density. And then also with our rural areas of Minatrista, from a density, strictly a density user standpoint, we have less than some cities might, so the cost is, is spread out amongst less.
Because we still have the cost of the infrastructure and the maintenance of the system, but we only have eleven hundred and fifty users to spread it to, because we have pockets of development, we're not, you know, a dens, yeah, densely populated city, like you say, as far as number of people compared to square miles or whatever, so.
And what Mr. Grimm and, and Mr. Veroni both, I think, mentioned is, and just to make sure you caught it, any of the new housing developments that are going in, they're all, those developers are required to put water in under the streets. And so any new housing developments, they will be users, so they will be helping to mitigate the cost of that. And then the, the percentage of Minatrista residents who are on water is going to increase.
Ms. Maud, and then we're going to go to the other side.
Real quick question, regarding what you had just said, Patricia, the new development that's going in off of Highway Seven over by the.
Woodland Cove, yeah.
Are they, what well are they going to be in?
There's a number of wells.
Is it going to be Hunter's Crest?
It's going to be the south, the southern slash central system.
So until they get, until the, the water treatment, they're going to have some, not the best water?
Right, they're going to be in the same boat as you.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I was just curious to know which well they're going to be hooked into.
Well, it's going to be the Kings Point Water Tower, but.
Correct.
Is that what Hunter's Crest is on right now?
Yes, and part of the problem with Hunter's Crest is the long line from Kings Point Water Tower to Hunter's Crest, so.
Alright, I was just curious.
And that's something I was going to bring up, and Paul, I guess you can answer this too, being that Woodland Cove is that close to the tower, it's going to make a huge difference. I'm sure most people see that if you're close to the tower, your water's better, the longer it sits in the pipe. I know there was a study made a couple of years ago, they said, on an average, I think in the wintertime, when the water leaves Kings Point Road Tower, it takes five days to get to Hunter's Crest. So it sits in that pipe that long.
Right.
And the chemicals cannot hold it together. So the closer you are to the tower, the less apt you're going to have, have problems with the water. So I'm assuming, does that make sense, Paul, that Woodland Cove is not going to have as many problems as we see in some areas?
I think they're still going to see iron and manganese in the system, that's, that's just a result of where the water's coming from. There are, when I talked early on about water quality issues in the southwest part of the system, that's exactly why I talked about more getting stagnant water, because you have two and a half miles of water main to get the water out there. It's also the reason we're looking at putting a new elevated tank in that southwest area, so that you have water pressure and you have an area to store it, and you're not relying so much on things like fire flow and those kind of things from one pipe. So that elevated tank does help provide enough storage for that area as it grows. And as development occurs, eventually there'll be another line that loops that system, that will help circulate that water. So that's part of the overall plan, is what would be happening for that southwest area of the city.
Okay. So now, I've got to give these people.
I just want to say one thing, I'll give you a second.
Okay.
I think a lot of our confidence is shaking.
Sure.
And a couple of things that you have said.
Well, come, come to the podium then.
My name's Bill Bach, I live in Hunter's Crest.
I'm sorry, Bill.
Bill Bach.
Bach, okay.
I live at four five ninety, Merton Drive.
Sure.
The, the confidence level, some of the things that you've said, and it's just, I sit here and I think about it, you say we're going to try or we should. Can we just get you to commit to say we are?
For what?
To post on the website, to put the signs out, to send the emails, we should, we should try, or are you?
Well, I've, I've talked to staff, and I said, this is what I'd like to see. And I think we're going to talk with the council sooner than later, in terms of getting a commitment and, and directing staff. So I know that staff has said they like to let the residents know, I want to let the residents know all the time. That's what I would like.
And I appreciate that. I've just been sitting here, I know the city is not a business, but we all are in business, and we all own businesses.
Yeah, right.
And I think that in the business that I'm in, if I gave some of the answers that I heard tonight, I'd be out. I just don't have a lot of choices here.
Right.
So if I run a restaurant, and I'm not happy with that restaurant, I can go to another one.
Sure.
I can't chew the water, other than selling my house and moving somewhere else, which I'll probably get less value from my own base of water.
Like I said, we're trying, we, we are.
Are, that would be a lot better than we're trying or we should. I think we all know we should, but the question would be, will you? And that's what I want to know, I mean, anything I can repeat is, all my concerns are everybody's concerns, so I'm not going to bore you with that.
Okay.
But I would just like a little confidence from here, to say that we're going to do it. Because I think that's where a lot of us are upset, was we were promised, and it didn't happen. So when promises aren't fulfilled, there's a little bit of confidence here, so.
And I understand.
And I appreciate it.
I'd like to just say, please, give us a chance, you know? That's three new people here, we've been here for a few months, we're working hard, we are. And we, you know, a lot of these issues, we've never dealt with before. So we, we've, I've met with people, I've, I've been in neighborhood meetings, I've, I've invited people to the council meeting. We've listened for many hours to concerns and, and comments. As many of those comments, we're taking to heart and we're implementing them. And so we, we're doing our very best, because we want to make your life and your lives and your homes a better place to live.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add something tangible on that, on the communication standpoint. When Mr. Veroni took, stepped into the role of city administrator, the, his, some of his responsibilities have been restructured to some degree. And we are in the process of searching for someone who is, instead of having a city administrator and an assistant city administrator, we're now going to have a city administrator and someone that handles human resources and marketing slash communications. Because we have identified the need for better communication. And so that person, once they are on board, which will probably be within the next six months.
Oh, no, sooner.
Sooner than that, but not to over, not to, not to overpromise and underdeliver.
June, the deadline is June.
Yeah, so that person will be coming on board, and one of their responsibilities is to be improving the communication, whether it be via website, more frequent newsletter, email blasts and that sort of thing. So that is one of the tangible things that is being put in place specifically to identify the communication issue.
And we need to improve our communications with our citizens. I'm not questioning that, we're not arguing that, we absolutely need to, and we know that, and we're moving in that direction as well.
Thank you. And the last question I have is, where can we get the information now until you put it on the website?
Well, I would, I would like to see that we put it up, like maybe.
I think that's probably your best best way for us to put it up, we'll try to get it up this week, and some of the information that you saw tonight, and then some of the testing stuff that we've done.
How about from last week, when we did the flushing? Did you have the test results from that?
There's no testing that was involved with the flushing.
But we can get the test results from even the past month or whatever.
Periodic testing, so.
Twice a week, right?
Well, they test each well twice a week, but what we report to the DNR and, or, I'm sorry, the Department of Health, I think, is a monthly report.
But Ms. Veroni, can we?
So we'll post monthly reports.
But can we put up the weekly tests?
I'm not sure if we're allowed to put up the, the weekly tests, I think we could probably put up what we sent to the Minnesota Department of Health, which is a monthly report.
Why wouldn't you be allowed to? Who tells you you can't?
The idea is to give you the results that we sent to the state, that's what I want to post for you to see.
Right.
So, that, I think that's what we're going to probably post.
That they ask for, because they point you to where they want you to take the testing, correct?
Not always, I mean, we test our wells more than we should on purpose, so, but we're required to do monthly testing and for certain things.
What is that, what do you do with that information with the ones that you're not required to do?
That all goes on the, the report, I mean, they get all our information.
And where, where can we get that report?
When we post it online, you'd be able to get it.
We'll get, all the testing. Well, all the testing is just the ones that you reported.
I couldn't answer that question for you, sir. We'll just do our best to give you something more information. What you're getting now is zero, and so we'll give you more than zero.
Okay.
But, so.
I'd love to say that helps.
Yeah, um, well.
Well, it should.
But, but Ms. Veroni, what you're saying though is that all of the test results go on this monthly report.
Correct.
That's filed, so then technically all of the testing results are on that report.
Yep.
That's what I'm hearing him saying.
Right.
Okay, so that's what you're asking for.
And that'll be by June?
No, that's different.
I would hope sooner.
June is what, uh, council member called, and the mayor were talking about as far as getting a replacement for my old position. That's June. This, we can do sooner than that. We don't have to wait till June to post up.
Any guesses?
On posting, we'll try to get some stuff up this week.
We'll try.
Yeah.
We're hoping for definites here.
Okay, I'll tell you, definitely we'll have some stuff up this week if that makes you feel better, but it's, it, the idea is to get the information out to you, so.
Thank you.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, now, we are gonna move to this side. Um, this gentleman, anything? Okay, next row, anybody? Going once, going twice? Please feel free.
My name is Roger Von Holtz, I'm, live in Hunter's Crest. I happen to be president of the Hunter's Crest homeowners association also. One thing I wanted to mention is, uh, Crystal's statement, Terry Harstead used to call me every time, and I used to put an email blast out on the flushing, I also used to post it on the Facebook and post it on our we- old website.
Okay.
Every time.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I have the same lack of confidence that the prior gentleman spoke about, uh, especially with the communications aspect, somebody taking five minutes to give me a phone call doesn't seem like a unreasonable.
Sure.
Request. And also, Crystal lives at the very, very end of the system.
Okay.
But she's in, you know, the deepest, southernmost part of Hunter's Crest, and she's gonna see the worst parts of it every time.
Sure.
And I can understand, and by the way, all the things you said to do, I do. I spend thirty dollars a month replacing filtration, and also draining my water here. Matter of fact, I drained the water here and I lost the valve to drain the water here. And that, that's not a five-minute task you're talking about there.
Yeah.
Those require hours.
Sure.
And, you know, that's why, and you say, well, you've told me, just now here you told me, I at least have to put up with it for another year, and based on the way I've seen city projects go in the past, it's probably gonna be into two thousand seventeen before we had finished.
I'm pushing staff to finish it up in twenty sixteen.
I, I can just go on the basis of what I, I'm not gonna try to go into the separate issues with Hunter's Crest, of which there's five or six, that have never been finished, that I've been trying to address for a couple of years. So I'm not gonna be very happy about it.
I understand, I know.
And, but, just one last comment, uh, I think you ought to try to do something about the coloration of the water. I think that's totally unfair.
Okay. Um, Ms., Roger.
That's the water treatment.
Could you make sure, uh, that you leave your phone number and email? I think I have it at home, but we definitely wanna get it on our record, so, um, if you can leave it with us.
Well, you, see, that, I gave, I've given that to you twice.
I have it at my house, and I just got it not too long ago, as you know, but, um, you're right, we.
I've been on election committee for six years, you know, six, six elections, so, you know.
Well, you're right.
It's not like the city people don't know me. Joni knows me personally, so.
Communication, yeah. Communication is important, and we dropped the ball on this one, absolutely, you're right. So, um, anybody else in that row? Then moving to the next row, anybody? Andrea?
My name is Andrea Felmoody, and I'm a twenty-nine-year resident of Minatrista, and I live in the, uh, north end where it's serviced by the north well, and I think Mr. Bushnell had suggested possibly phasing in, um, the treatment plants. I sincerely hope that you do them both at the same time. I've been, we've had issues with rust in our water going back twenty, I mean, since we first moved in. So even though there's more people here from Hunter's Crest, I don't know what the deal is with the people in my neighborhood, they just don't seem to care too much, but, um, it, we do, we do care about our water quality. Um, we've had issues with rust, and we also have the high levels of radium and gross alpha, so I think our area needs to be addressed just as much as the Hunter's Crest, so I hope you'll keep that in mind, and it sounds like you're going to.
I think we will, and as stated before, there seems to be some kind of a cost, um, uh, savings if you do them together, so, yeah.
And also, um, Mr. Bush, like Mr. Bushnell, I also had voted for the centralized system because of the lack of info, because my lack of understanding and the incorrect misleading information that was on that survey, and I think most of us that voted for centralized did so because it was the cheapest option. It wasn't frankly until Lisa, um, became mayor and really looked into, and for all of you Hunter's Crest people that haven't been to many of these meetings, I've been coming to every meeting, every city council meeting pretty much that involve water treatment since back in March of last year, and the previous city council, for those who haven't been following it that closely, on December second of two thousand and thirteen, had given, um, WSB the go-ahead to build and design a decentralized gravity filtration system. The previous city council wasted a whole year. Once the new city council members came on, we're back to the beginning, where we should have been and where we ended. So they had given WSB the go-ahead, three weeks or four weeks later, they, they rescinded it because they wanted to look at reverse osmosis, which was way too expensive, totally unnecessary, gravity filtration does just reluse the contaminants that we're concerned with, and reverse osmosis is a big waste of water, too. So it's, it's wasting our natural resources that we can't afford to waste. So I really think you should be thanking these people. Instead of chewing them out, they're doing a great job. Um, they've really dug into the issues and tried to, uh, figure out, you know, which was the best option, and as I said, I didn't know the difference, I never understood what the decentralized issues were versus the centralized, because Paul would make, he never bothered to explain it to any of us. So I just wanted to let you all know that, and, um, I had one other thing. No, I guess that was it.
Okay, I'll have to think about it later, but, um, okay, anybody else in that row? Ms. Allen?
I just have just a quick question. I'm Sylvia Allen, Landings Drive, Hunter's Crest. Um, I'm hearing that construction, construction will be completed by the fall of two thousand sixteen, so along with the completion of the, of construction, will everything be up and running at that time? Is that?
Well, that's a good question. Um, I want it to be up and running by then. Mr. Hornby.
The, um, the council's desired completion date is the end of two thousand sixteen. Um, I believe in Mr. Veroni's presentation, it was fall of two thousand sixteen, so end of two thousand sixteen. In sending out the, um, RFP and the scope of services, we're requiring each consultant that proposes to identify their schedule. We're having them define their schedule in two ways, with a certain funding and without a certain funding. And follow that schedule, and they're gonna have fees for both of those. I don't think this is specifically gonna be a decision made on fees for the consulting firm. I think it's gonna be also look at, um, what they're proposing, what their project approach is, and what's their timeline in getting it done. Maybe we can get a consultant in here, we can have this in construction yet this year, which is what our goal is. Um, perhaps that'll happen, but we'll have to evaluate what they're putting together first to answer that specifically. I don't think there's a guarantee on what the completion date would be until we, uh, can give better idea of the timelines once we have a consultant on board.
Okay, so Mr., um.
So it's kind of a non-answer answer.
I know, it was, but so, so, yes, what, when would we know what that timeline is?
The, we'll, well, staff will be evaluating that, making that recommendation to the council on April sixth, and so when we present, you'll have those proposals.
Okay.
To review as part of your packet.
Right.
And then, you know, your decision will base also on.
So April sixth, we'll have a timeline then?
Yes.
Okay, does that, so, we don't know today, we're hoping for the end of fall of, uh, two thousand sixteen, but we will have a timeline in place, um, or we will know that April sixth.
One thing to make sure that everyone is aware of though, is that things happen in progression of projects that can either shorten or expand that date, but we require them to provide a schedule. When we have them under a contract, we, they have to show us why they can or cannot meet that schedule, or if they can meet it, they can do it sooner, which is preferred.
Um, I'd also like to thank all of you, and thank you for the presentation today, and for giving us suggestions to temporarily alleviate the problem. These are things that I wasn't aware of that, that we could do. Um, and I, as I said, I am a resident of Hunter's Crest, so I do appreciate that, and knowing that there is a temporary solution. Um, and I'd also like to say that what the council is presented with isn't easy, and, um, I know your work is hard, I appreciate what you're doing. I know that our mayor has personally pored through pages and pages and pages of documents regarding, you should be an expert in the water treatment system.
Thank you.
So I'd just like to say, thank you all for your efforts, and I know that this, um, tube shall pass.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, anybody else in that row? Anybody else in the next row? Anybody else in the back? Mr. Barkus, I'm sure you'd like to say something, come on.
Todd Barkus, Hunter's Crest, forty-five seventy Morganser Drive, I've lived in Minatrista for twenty-eight, twenty-nine years. Most of that, I was up in north, I had my own well, and my water consistently was better probably than the water I get in Hunter's Crest. Um, and that was just on my own well, though I did go through about four or five water softeners, 'cause the water is very rusty. Um, one thing you talked about, having us leave our addresses so you can send us emails, put something on the website so we can sign up for an email.
Okay, good idea.
That would be a much smarter idea.
Yeah, thank you.
And the flushing, does this happen in other cities? I mean.
Yes.
Okay, so all cities do it, not just the fact that we have to do it, okay?
Yes, it's a function of maintenance.
It is, okay. Um, I have another note here, but I don't know what that means. And I was also one that voted for the centralized system first, until I found out that the decentralized was gonna be a lot cheaper. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, um, wanna make a comment or have a question? Because we do need to wrap it up by about nine o'clock, 'cause we have to change videos. This, this gentleman here?
I have a question. Thank you for being here tonight and for answering your questions. Uh, it looks like later on you're gonna discuss the water treatment financing options?
Yes.
I was just wondering, are there going to be any options discussed that would be long-range, so that the, the future users would absorb a little bit of the capital cost now?
Yes.
That's a possibility?
Yeah.
We would look at doing some sort of financing that would be over a twenty-year period, and that would be to help match the future users to the system and not, and have that payback so that they could get on, get on board and, and pay for it, so, uh, that would, that, the lengthening of the term, I mean, A, helps, you know, reduce the, the rate increases, obviously for the current users, but B, it also helps, you know, spread the cost of the, paying back that principal and interest to the, the users that are coming on board, so.
Sure, okay.
And also, in answer to that, y- you need to understand, the water rates are only one bucket. We have three buckets from which we will be taking funds to repay this loan. One bucket is called.
User charges.
User charges, one is whack charges or, uh, water area charges, and then the other one is connection fees. So there's three buckets that, the connection fees are per unit, so when a house gets built and connects to the city water, you have to pay a fee to connect. Um, that's one bucket, the other is the rates, and the other one is, when a developer comes in, they're charged a certain amount of money for what's called an area charge to help with the infrastructure costs. So the future, you're correct, will also, uh, future development and homes being connected will help pay, not just with the rates, but in, with those other areas as well.
Okay, and then the, there was a two to four percent mentioned a few times. Is that a two to four percent increase in our current monthly bill?
The quarterly, correct, that'd be, that'd be, that'd be an annual increase, so, yeah, each year, it's projected right now to be about two, two to four percent a year. And that's just a factor of spreading, you know, thirteen million cost over eleven hundred people, we have eleven fifty, or, you know, users on the system, so.
That's much better than what I heard in the past.
Yeah, before, when we were looking at reverse osmosis and some of those things, it was ten, fifteen, twenty percent increases per year, so.
Every year.
Every year, yeah.
All right, and then one last thing for the engineer. Um, I think I heard you say that they're gonna, they're looking into anyway, putting in a, um, whatever you call it, a water tower or something, and also closing that loop in Hunter's Crest. Um, and I'm not an engineer or anything, but I've heard that when Hunter's Crest was designed, it was designed to be a closed loop, but it's still an open loop, which creates a lot of dead ends in there. So I'm wondering, is that part of the process, if you come in there, would you be able to close some of those loops so the water could circulate instead of dead-ending?
Not immediately, and that's the goal long-term. And what I mean by circulating that water is likely there's another main that would occur through the city's development that would connect another water source, um, another water main to that southwest area, so you do have a circulation of the entire area of, of water. So you, you have more than one point of getting water. Um, long-term plans, not only would be, you know, the, in this particular situation, we're looking at adding an elevated storage tank, but we'd also look at adding a well out in that area as well, at some time in the future, when you need, when you post twenty thirty.
Okay, thank you. So the current plan, the current promotion does not include closing the, the loop in Hunter's Crest? We're still gonna have all the same dead ends?
Yes.
That's unfortunate. Um, 'cause wasn't that area, from, to my understanding, it was originally designed to be a closed-loop system, and it stopped, and that created a lot of problems that we have with the water dead-ending out there rather than circulating?
I don't know that that's necessarily true. I had not, I have not heard that, and I haven't observed that, no. I, from what I see in Hunter's Crest, the way it's laid out is not unlike any other subdivision that promotes expansion, whether it's across a corporate boundary or not. Um, you're gonna have a dead-end street that could be expanded into another developing portion of another community, and at that point, you could interconnect water systems and those kind of things, so, no, I, I don't see that it's any more unusual than anyone else, any, any other, uh, subdivisions I've seen. The main issue with Hunter's Crest is one long water main that serves water to that system.
Okay, and what, what's the likelihood that they will do an additional water main then?
That's not in the plans.
It's not in the plans, okay.
Short-term plans.
Yeah, it, through development, it happened through development at this time. There's other, there, there's another plan to provide something post-two thirty that would resolve that issue.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, okay, we have one more question, and then, oh, I'm, I'm, hold on just a second, this lady has a question, and I'm gonna give her precedence here since.
Hi, my name is Debbie Miller, and I live at four double oh seven Landings Drive in Minatrista in Hunter's Crest, and, um, I've been there for about nine years with my family, and I thank you for all what you're doing, and I just really would, obviously I know you're trying to make things happen really quickly, and I feel really bad for the families that have small children, and I just wanted to make a comment about the simple things in life, like coming home from a stressful day at work, wanting to draw a nice hot bath and say, oh shit, it's brown, and I just let it go back down, and I just don't do my bath for the night. Um, two years after I moved in, I developed cancer. Whether or not it's related to the water, probably not, maybe, but it's those levels of things that are in our water that, the simple pleasures that we can't necessarily enjoy in our own homes, is really scary. So I, I, I beg you to please just try to push this through as quickly as possible, because the content, uh, percentage to my body versus a small child, what it's doing to them, we don't know what these long-term effects are gonna have on our families, and we just wanna enjoy our homes and enjoy our community, and I don't feel safe in my own home when it comes to my water, so, please do the best you can to push this through, and I thank you.
We are, thank you. And then you had one more question, ma'am? And then we have to wrap it up, so.
To what this lady said, I would like to comment that a lot, I have fish, and I had to stop using the water of the city, because they were, they were dying. I had to use, I'm using mineral water, by the way.
Okay.
But, uh, I would like the communication and information, please, well, be real information, and, uh, not just, you know, plans or general thing, you know, uh, technical things should be available to the people, uh.
And that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
I need to wrap it up because our tape is running out.
If you cannot put everything online, which is also possible, uh, which I would understand, I would suggest you also. If you cannot put everything online, which is also possible, uh, which I would understand, I would suggest you also have like a place or folder or something to be available to, to, to consult.
Like I said, what we're going to be, what, what happens with our city is we videotape all these meetings. And I've made it a point that we are going to be discussing the water issues only at the regular city council meetings where the, where it's videotaped. And therefore you can go onto our website and watch by YouTube. There's a spot on the website currently and you can click on there and you can hear the discussion and so on. And we'll also be doing, even if we don't have it as a regular discussion item, we'll have staff doing an update on, um, on the water treatment facilities every council meeting, so.
I think it's great that you're making that available.
Thank you.
If you can also make it available and simple and summarize information.
Okay.
That would be helpful too. Thank you.
And with that, um, we're gonna take a quick break. I just wanna say, um, thank you all sincerely for coming and thank you for sharing your ideas and your concerns. It is hard sometimes to sit up here and take it, but you know what? We need to hear it. Um, and again, I just want you to rest assured, we are concerned about the water that comes into your homes. And we want you to have a better quality of life. And we are moving forward. We are going to move forward with a decentralized plant. We are not gonna backtrack or sidetrack. We are moving forward as fast as we possibly can. Staff will tell you they're probably hard, uh, tired of listening to me when I say I want this online sooner than later. And we'll continue to push that. I think we've heard loud and clear, we need to make improvements when it comes to communication. We will do that. Not should, we will. And, uh, again, again, I'm not trying to make excuses, but we have been short-staffed. And with that, I've given staff a goal of, uh, June, getting somebody on board. So hopefully, and I look sideways at Mr. Broney, I said June, no late, later than that. So we will get better at our communications, uh, give us a little bit of time. So with that, again, thank you for coming. You're welcome to stay. Otherwise, we'll take a quick ten-minute recess.